Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the April meeting for the Town of Kipsey's zoning board of appeals. Would you please rise for questions? Thank you very much. Let's take attendance. Christine?
Here.
Art?
Here.
Linda?
Here.
Tony S.
Here.
And I'm Tony Gates. I will be filling in for Paul Leahy, who was not here this evening. Just to cover the format, if anybody didn't grab or you're just walking in, there's agendas up here on the side if you want to follow along. So what we'll do is we'll call each item as they are listed on the agenda. If somebody's not here present for it, we'll do a second call. This format is available both online, the address is there over on the town website, and we'll follow along. We will call each applicant up, you'll be sworn in, we will listen to comments and ask questions from the board. Once the applicant is done with the process, we will open it up to either anybody here in the audience or online before we close the public record for that item. So we'll do, why don't we call number one? So first item would be 54 Woodlawn Avenue. Is anybody here for that?
Hello, good evening.
Hello. Hello. I believe you were sworn in last time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So why don't you update us on your application?
Yeah, that's right. The application, the location of the driveway changed from the middle of the house, which is, originally we proposed on the left side of the driveway, but to make it aesthetically appealing, I think, we decided to propose the driveway to the right of the driveway. And I sent, I submitted a plan via Excel. I'm not sure if you have it in front of you, if it's available?
We do. Yes, we do, we do have it.
Great.
So the old proposal went from nine by 23, and the new proposal's 12 by 23, but on the opposite side?
That is correct.
And nothing else has changed, correct?
No.
Okay. Chrissy, Christine, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
You have a machine?
Yeah.
Okay. Art, you have any questions?
Yes, I have questions. Even though, even though you're moving the driveway, you still exceed the width of the driveway allowance, I believe, right? You've just moved where the violation is going to be, I think, based on my numbers.
I'm not exactly sure how much the excess, or the, yeah, the excess of the driveway would be. I can make an adjustment if necessary. Would you have that information?
The variance originally was for 14 feet to the width, and now it's 17 feet to the width with the new proposal.
Okay. I'm trying to visualize what you're telling me. Is it possible to, is it possible to... So, I'm sorry, let me see if I can understand this. So I, what you're saying is that I would have to reduce the width of the driveway by five feet? From 17 to 12?
So you're allowed a driveway only of 15 feet. You currently have a 20-foot wide driveway, and you're looking to make it an additional 12 feet wide. So that would be a total of 32 feet, but you're only allowed 15 feet. What was noticed for the public hearing was you were going to widen it to a total of 29 feet, which would require a variance of 17 feet. So we haven't actually noticed for this wider variance, but I think the board should offer some feedback to the applicant first about its thoughts on this, the variance?
Yes.
So, and it would be from the original 15 feet, because that's what is allowed for the original driveway.
Okay, understood.
So, why are we, why are we trying to make this driveway so much wider? What's the reason?
They have, the number of cars that park there are usually three or four. And, and this would accommodate the, this would accommodate the cars that would fit in the driveway.
And why can't one of the cars go in the garage?
The garage, the garage is being worked on at the moment, but one of the cars will be able to go into the garage, although the garage is pretty narrow. So it's, it's a little, you cannot fit just any car there, it would have to be a small car so you can open up the doors and get out of the, get out of the car. That's one of the reasons why the cars tend to be parked outside in the driveway.
And one last question, and I'm probably getting in trouble for asking this, but is this a rental or private home?
Actually, my son lives there, and some of his, some of his classmates from Marist also live there with him.
Okay, thank you. Linda, any questions?
No, I'm okay.
Tony S.
No questions.
I'll ask my question. So is there any questions from the audience? Or comments, right? Comments, questions? No one in the room? Let's see if you're on Zoom. Is anyone on Zoom who wishes to comment on this application? Not seeing anyone. Thank you. I move to close the public hearing for item number one. Say again. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries? And again, if you want to, I didn't mention this, but if you wanted to wait to the end of the meeting for an answer, we'll debate that and have a conclusion, or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning for what the outcome is.
Great, thank you very much.
So item number two, splash car wash. Is there anybody here for that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, good evening.
What's your name, sir?
My name is James Karas with JMC. Here this evening on behalf of Splash Car Wash Incorporated, and also with me on Zoom is Mr. Glenn Shealy.
Okay.
Are you tonight?
Do you, do you both swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Yes, I do.
So you'd presented to us a while ago, but can you update us on where we are?
Sure. We were last before the zoning board in July of 2023, and since that meeting, we've had several follow-up public hearings with the planning board, and we've had also follow-up meetings with staff and with NYS DOT regarding the project, and we've made some improvements to the site plan with regard to how it operates and functions. And I have a quick couple slides to update the board if I can share my screen.
Yes, go ahead.
All right, can everyone see?
Yep. Yep, we can see.
Okay. So just to walk the board quickly through this application, this is proposed car wash redevelopment located at 2245 South Road. The site is currently unoccupied, but it's improved with approximately 10,000 square foot building, which was formerly operated as the Umberto's Restaurant and Catering Hall. There also was an existing car wash accessory to the use at that property as well. Property is just under an acre in size in the BH Highway Business Zoning District. There were two existing curb cuts, one on South Road, southbound lanes, and one at the intersection of South Gate Drive. The site is also almost entirely covered with impervious surfaces at approaching 92%. We're here seeking your consideration for four area variances, and we're before the planning board seeking site plan approval and special permit approval. So since our last presentation, a couple things have occurred here to the site plan. First and foremost, we reduced the size of the wash tunnel structure itself, so the proposed building center to the site is now 4,700 square feet in size, and that's down from 5,400 square feet. So we've reduced it by approximately 700 square feet, and what that allowed us to do is to move everything kind of centered to the site, and we are able to provide an unobstructed 20-foot-wide 360-degree access around the entire property from entrance to exit. And that is accomplished by replacing one of the three kiosks for ordering your car wash in the three queuing lanes with an oversized 20-foot-wide lane that we're going to designate as a express lane or a subscription service license plate reader type of ordering kiosk only. And that, that lane will have no obstructions, there'll be no gate barring vehicles from passing through, they'll be directed with lights and signage when it's their turn to enter the wash. And on the other side of that, there's the ability for not only larger refuse vehicles, delivery vehicles to enter and access site using that lane, but also if the need should arise for any emergency service apparatus to do that as well. So we've also added some mountable curbing here on the center green grass island with grass pave in the center. That allows not only the 360-degree access around the site, but allows vehicles to recirculate throughout the site without having to exit back onto Route 9. So that's another change that we, we made. Another, another update here is we eliminated the, I think there was two or three parking spaces along the southern side of the property here, along the bypass lane. We relocated those interior to the center of the site, so all of the parking and vehicle operations, the vacuum stations, employee parking, it's all centered to the site now. Eliminates potential vehicular and pedestrian conflicts interior to the site. It also provides much more of an opportunity to screen and buffer the South Gate Drive frontage along this property here. And we've looked at modifying and updating by widening the radii of the curb cuts both into and out of the site to assist in vehicle movements into and out of the site. And as I mentioned earlier, there are numerous studies that we've been doing over the past couple months. We provided two iterations of a traffic study that's been reviewed by towns' traffic consultants and NYS DOT, and we've had several follow-up meetings with staff and with other interested involved agencies. And just to reiterate, the area variances, we are seeking for this property or for this project, number one is minimum lot size. We have a 1 point, or 0.95 acre lot. Minimum acre required for car wash uses in this zone is two acres, so a variance is requested for the lot size. Number two is a residential setback distance. We are within the 500-foot setback from a residential use, being that there is a residential zone and residential properties to our south. The third area variance is also a residential setback variance to a trash enclosure structure, so we are requesting relief from that dimensional variance as well. And the fourth identified variance that was in Mr. Walti's memo, but this has been on the site plan since the initial application, is the driveway distance from an intersection, which where 200 feet is required. We have approximately 173 feet from the intersection with South Gate Drive, seeking relief of 26.2 feet. The driveways are in a location where they have to be for the site to have a viable access onto a state highway. We've tried to maximize that efficiency to the extent that we can. So that's a brief overview of the updates, a recap of the variances we're seeking, and as you know, the planning boards has not, as lead agency, made a secret determination yet. So this meeting and this update for you tonight is to answer any questions you may have, to get any updates from your board, to hopefully assist the planning board in the town to moving this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. You said there's a turnaround on there so that people wouldn't have to go out. Where, where is that on the map?
Yes, so if my cursor is visible on the screen, so in this area, there's a center island, which is some green space, and then there's some hatching here in this triangular area between the entrance and exit drives, and there's proposed mountable curbing on either side here. And interior to this mountable curbing in the hatched area is proposed to be a grass pave or other geotextile reinforced hard surface that will facilitate vehicle tracking across it. So it is in this area right here.
Okay. And then I know one of the concerns was to have access for emergency services. Is the, the way that the driveway is configured there, is that conducive to that?
Yes, we have, we've done, and let me pull it up real quick here. We've done vehicle turning, vehicle tracking analyses for this property using the existing driveway configuration. So it does take it, you'll see, the vehicle tracking path is shown here. This is a WB40 articulating trailer truck, which is what the Arlington District has requested we use for our analysis. It does take advantage of the mountable curbing in the center island that I just described as it enters and exits the site. The important thing being that it is able to circulate the site unobstructed all the way around the building while exiting out onto Route 9 southbound. Now, this turning movement out of the site has been the subject of a lot of discussion, both with the planning board and with the DOT. We have raised this question with them, and they have indicated that they don't take issue with the turning movements encroaching into the center lanes of the Route 9 southbound lanes. We are, however, awaiting a response from DOT in writing via email or a letter to that effect, but we have discussed that with them.
Okay. The last question I have is, so the trash enclosure, is that to the, right out of the bottom of the screen there, is that that little gate? So the variance for that is that it's too close to the residential? Incorrect, if I'm wrong, it's 50 feet?
Correct. Correct. The structure setback is 50 feet from the residential zone. This trash enclosure location here makes sense from a site circular point, the vehicle will come in, you know, access the enclosure, back up, and then continue to exit the site. There is a grade change between the South Gate Drive frontage and the site, so there is a proposed retaining wall here that is approximately five and a half feet at its greatest height in the corner. So this trash enclosure is set down about five feet lower than the adjacent residential zone to the south. Like I said, it's screened with a retaining wall, it's lower. On top of that wall will be a privacy fence, and on top of that, on the higher grade side, there will be the landscaping that you see on this rendering.
Okay. Has it been discussed moving that interior similar to how the parking spaces were moved interior to the lot?
It's an option that I think we put out there as far as some flexibility we may have with the site plan. So I think with some creative thinking along those lines, it is potentially achievable.
That's all the questions I have. Christine?
No, that, that covers it. Thank you.
Art?
No, I would like to see that trash area moved internally too, if possible. Other than that, I have no questions.
Linda?
I'm interested in the noise levels from the car wash and the drying stations and has anyone determined how much, what the noise level would be for a car wash that is operating in the same way that yours is?
Yes, so the site plan includes 16 self-service vacuum stations, and they are, they are shown on, on the site plan as these parking spaces. And what, how that works is that there's a centralized vacuum system that provides the, you know, low-pressure suction, and that centralized vacuum station is located here in the center green island of the site. So number one, it is almost entirely in the center of the site, and when we're talking about mitigating any noise to the residential properties to the south, it's screened both by the building and by the fact that the site is approximately six feet lower than the adjacent South Gate Drive driveway. So it's got those two physical site plan components helping to mitigate the noise. The third item is the actual mufflers that are on this state-of-the-art central vacuum station itself. So the noise readings from the manufacturer are such that at 10 feet away from this unit, we're at approximately 69 decibels of sound, and then that decreases to approximately 38 decibels at about 30 feet away from this unit. So sound decreases exponentially as you get further and further away. So those, those factors here are mitigating any noise from the vacuum stations that would potentially impact the neighborhood. And what I will say about the wash tunnel, and I might ask Glenn to just chime in here on some of this technology as well, but all the washing goes on inside the building. So none of the vehicle washing happens outside at all, so the noise from that is contained within the building. And Glenn, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that component?
Oh, they also run automated doors on the car wash that will open, close in between each car, which really keeps a 100% quiet atmosphere outside the tunnel. And we also run similar to the vacuum system, silencers or mufflers on our blowers to keep down the dust for reading, I think it was under 60 when standing like one foot outside the door, and greatly decreased within five and 10 feet away.
My other question has to do with the queuing for cars who are going in, and I wasn't quite sure, are they exiting back onto Route 9? I just can't see from where I am. So those were my two questions about traffic.
Yes, they are. The way the, the circulation of vehicles is proposed is they will enter off of southbound Route 9. There are 22 conservatively spaced, 22 queuing spaces here in any one of the three queue aisles, the three ordering kiosks. Cars are released one at a time into the wash tunnel. It's very efficient. And then they, they exit the wash tunnel, they can utilize any one of the available vacuum stations if they're available, or they can use the allotted 150-foot long exiting pathway to make a right turn out onto southbound Route 9 to exit the site.
That's all I have. Oh. Where are you proposing to put signage? That was my last question.
Yes, we did, we did get a signage package put together. We submitted it for preliminary review. There is proposed building signage. Let me, let me pull it up real quick here. So this is a view of the northern side of the building. Say, there's a car wash channel letter signs here on the eastern side, which would be the side closest to Route 9, and then there's a WashCo branded circular sign on the western side of the building. And then if we look at either end of the, of the building, you see the circular WashCo branded signage as well. So that does it for the, the building signage, and then we're proposing one monument sign, which will be a electronic messaging sign. The designer has designed this so that it meets the percentages as far as size requirements for the electronic messaging. This monument sign, we are showing in a location that is in this area here where my, where my cursor is circling, and that is, we are flexible on that location, but we wanted to put it in an area that wouldn't have any, you know, site distance or site obstruction angles as far as vehicles entering or exiting the site.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't, like, we're, we're not dealing with that.
No, I haven't realized that yet. Most likely if they want...
If there was any variances, we would come back.
Yeah, they'd have to come back, yep.
I just realized it, yeah, but I was curious.
Yes, we, yes, thank you for the question on signage, though. We appreciate it.
Tony?
Yeah, just one question. Looking at your, at your site diagram here, is the only access to the, to the vacuum stations going to be from the, let's see, I guess that would be from the east? It looks like there's some kind of a wall that's on the, on the west end between that initial island with, that's landscaped and the, the building with the wash tunnel? Is that, is that some kind of a wall?
Yeah, it's not a wall. Well, first, you are correct, the only access to the vacuum stations is through this drive aisle here. This is, this is a curved area, so this will be curved with, you know, landscape treatment in the middle there. So there is no access on this end of the parking bay or the vacuum station bays. You may recall from when you first saw this application that it did include an access point there that had removable bollards that could come out if needed to open it up.
Right.
In our discussions with staff and with fire department officials, we eliminated that and replaced it with the reduced building size, with the 20-foot-wide unobstructed access around the site to, to make sure that there was access. So that was, that was a change that, that was made.
Okay, so that line, that double line I'm looking at there, that's like a curb, basically, alongside the roadway?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I just have a couple follow-up questions. So you said the existing, or the new square footage for the building is proposed at 4,700 square feet? What was, what's the size of the existing building that's there currently?
We go back to the first slide here, which shows the site. The existing building is approximately 10,700 square feet.
Okay. And you said the current impervious is 92%?
Correct, and we are reducing that by approximately 21% to 71.7. So we've got a pretty significant reduction in impervious coverage here.
Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, the, just to clarify with something that was said, so we have had discussions with the DOT. That's probably the biggest remaining issue, I think, prior to seeker, you know, being ready to complete seeker on, at the planning board level. The turning movement out of the site is one of the big issues that still remains. You know, we are waiting for, as, as was said, we are waiting for a written statement from the DOT about whether or not that's okay or not. It's, that they, you know, the larger trucks exiting the site would need to, as, as was shown, you know, extend, cross into the middle or even the, was it the middle lane or the, or the left lane, Jim, James?
Middle.
Middle lane, okay. Yeah, so that, that's, that is, that is definitely a question mark that we're still waiting for some confirmation from the DOT on. But there's, you know, the site has, there's limited, just like with the, with the dumpster, trash enclosure, there's limited options, right? Because the site is considerably smaller than the two acres would be required.
Does anybody have any follow-up questions? Just want to hold your hands.
I just wanted to ask you if you would, would you just reiterate how many cars you think would be in, in the queue to, to approach the, the tunnel?
There are spaces for approximately twenty-two vehicles to queue. I do have a, do have a plan that shows that stacking. Let me just. Here it is. So here's a visual representation of, yes, twenty-two vehicles that are queued here. This is obviously a worst-case scenario. It shows what the site can accommodate. This is, of course, dependent on railroad conditions, including the time of day, the weather, the time of year. And, you know, it just demonstrates that the site can accommodate this, this spacing of vehicles here.
Thank you.
Art?
Mike, as a follow-up to your question, Mike, if, if the exit turn there, to go back, could that be extended a little wider to the south and give any large vehicles a little more clearance getting out? They wouldn't have to swing as far?
I, I don't, I don't know.
They made a wider apron there?
Well, so we, right, we had, we were required to study these largest, the large vehicles here in this, in this situation, being the WB forty representing fire apparatus and the trash refuse vehicle for garbage pickup. Those are two worst-case scenarios here. The vast majority of vehicles that will be accessing the site are typical passenger-sized vehicles that we all drive every day. Deliveries to the site are not large truck tailgate deliveries. Deliveries occur with, you know, the Sprinter van type of trucks. You know, there's no tailgate, you know, they're, they're delivering concentrated, you know, detergents and things like that. They're not, it's not like bulk storage of materials on this site, so.
You're not gonna have a lot of tractor trailers.
In fact, I don't think, there's not, we're not anticipating any needing to, to access the site on a regular basis. The, the trash vehicles, those are, those are gonna be a private carter. Those can be scheduled during, you know, off-peak hours when the wash is probably not in operation as it typically is. And then, of course, you know, should the need arise for any emergency apparatus to visit the site, that vehicle absolutely has first responder status. They go where they need to go, when they need to do it to get in and out. The turning movement demonstrates that. It can.
Thank you for that one. My other question, and I'm not sure if this goes to you or to us, the heights, the forty foot to the, to the side, the part of this car wash, in the main, the main structure, it looks like, on the left-hand side on this. Okay. Does that really have to be forty feet tall?
Is that a question for the applicant or for?
For the applicant, mainly, but, you know?
Yeah. The permitted height in this, in this zone is forty-five feet, I believe. Three stories, forty-five feet. Obviously, we're one-story structure here. So we are showing a forty-foot-high roof line in the front of the, of the structure. But if that's a comment you wanna submit, we can take it under consideration.
I just think it would look a lot, to me, I think it's to me, that, that, this just looks kind of large as far as the height.
And one of the reasons that the tall height in that one tower is we had to, we shortened the building to give the fire department the twenty-foot right-of-way. When we shortened the width of the building, we had to put some of our equipment upstairs in that second floor. So that was part of the reason for the taller height. And I think then the roof line brings it up, obviously, even higher. But that was why we needed that second floor up there when we shortened the width of the building.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks. Any other follow-up? Okay. Thank you for the update, for the presentation. Does anybody in the audience have any comments? Anyone in the room here? Someone on Zoom has a raised hand. Dee, can you unmute yourself? Not, I will.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we do. Yep, go ahead. Hi, would you state your name and be sworn in, please?
David Robinson.
Mr. Robinson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I swear.
What would you like that?
Yes.
What would you like that?
Yeah, um, as you know, I've spoken before, I'm really concerned about the water rundown to Route nine and freezing over. And not to mention the traffic backup, as you often see at most car wash. And also concerned about the environmental impact of the car wash. I hope you listen to my concerns. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Okay, the plant, yeah, and the planning board is looking at, I mean, the, the question of water draining off is, is something that's been looked, talked about quite a lot at the planning board meeting. Jim, you may, James, I'm sorry, you may want to elaborate on some of the things that you told the planning board last time about that. There's still some concern, but, you know, they, they have been working pretty hard to address that. So I'll let the applicant just explain that a little bit.
Sure, sure. Thank you for the question. Couple of things to consider that has been built into the site plan for water removal from vehicles. The first item is the high efficiency of the wash tunnel itself. High-tech blowers eliminates as much water as possible from the vehicle before it exits. The undercarriage washing of the vehicles happens at the beginning of the wash, so to give it the maximum number, length of time to, you know, drip off before the blowers hit the car. We're showing a speed bump, which is part of the special permit requirements to, you know, effectively shake excess drippage off of vehicles. And we're also showing the required one hundred and fifty-foot linear feet of travel distance from the exit of the wash to the exit of the property out onto Route nine. And then the last component that we updated and designed into the plan is that the driveway is actually backpitched grading-wise slightly into the site so that runoff does not, you know, just naturally flow out into the DOT right-of-way. It flows back into the site if it concentrates and there's drainage infrastructure via curb inlets that will collect any accumulated drainage and treat it on the site before releasing it. So there's a couple of components that have been put into this plan to mitigate that, that item.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anybody else that'd like to make comment on this application? If I move to close the public hearing? That's adjourned.
The planning board has not yet made a determination of significance, so they have to do that before this board can vote. So, and also, we understand now that they have to add a variance for the distance of, from the driveway to the intersection. And there may be sign variances needed based on the sign package, so we'll roll that probably all into one for upcoming. But at this point, if the board has any feedback on any of these that they'd like to share now, because the applicant is getting closed, the planning board is close to having what it's considering for secret determinations, the information it needs. So if there's any information this board wants to share, that either to the applicant or to the planning board, now would be the time.
So I guess my, my comments would be is, so I, I understand that this is, it's a small lot size, so I don't really know what, much you could do, but I do appreciate the effort put into the, the traffic flow into it. I do recognize that it's a, it's a smaller building than was originally proposed, and it's a much smaller, it's more than half the size of the existing building. So if you look at Umberto's, mum races, it's there, which is definitely in need of repair. It's half, it's less than half that size. So it's an updated building as well. I do like the impervious, the increase in the impervious surface.
Reduction in impervious.
Reduction, so I'm saying that right. So from ninety, ninety-two to seventy percent, so I think that that is a win. My one recommendation was, I would like to see the, if there's a way to move the trash to the center, even if that meant that you move the parking spaces back and swap that. If there was an opportunity to do that, I think that that would satisfy one of the variances. That would be my recommendation. And then, that's, that's, I do like the, the, the second curb cut. I like the reduction of that as well. That on South Gate, eliminating that entirely. I think that was a traffic hazard to begin with, so. And that would be my thoughts. Anybody else? Okay.
So a motion to adjourn?
So I move, I make a motion to adjourn to the next or a future.
Did you say May fifteenth?
May thirteenth.
May, to the May thirteenth meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
That moves us on to item number three, which is Vassar College, and that has been adjourned to July eighth meeting.
So this is, we adjourned it at the last meeting, right?
We adjourned it to the last meeting, so we don't have to, it's not, yeah. Number four.
Out of the motion.
You don't have to motion that. It's already adjourned to July. It's just on here for your, just as a placeholder.
Uh, so that moves us to item number four, forty-nine Honey Lane. How are you? I believe it's Mr. Bender. You were sworn in last time. If you could state your name, we'll swear you in.
Yeah, my name's Paul Pealon, S and P Architects.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
So, good evening. Thank you for seeing us. I'm here tonight with Cole and Tina Bender. They live at forty-nine Honey Lane. They would like to add a one-car garage to their existing home. The size of the garage would be fourteen feet wide by twenty feet deep. The challenge is that their neighborhood has fairly small lots with fairly large setbacks. So their existing house is approximately thirty-point-four feet from the front property line to the house, which makes it really difficult, if not impossible, to add anything of significance to the front of their home. We are proposing the garage at fourteen by twenty. That will allow us to provide ten-point-five feet from the property line to the front of the garage addition. So they would need a variance of nineteen-point-four-two feet. You may need to correct the application. I believe they have different numbers. But this is based on the site and survey that I prepared. In 2019, they were granted a front yard variance for a in-ground pool and a fence. We've shown this addition to be less than the variance that was required for that pool and that fence. So we don't believe we're making that front yard setback any less than it currently is. And again, the, the lots in the neighborhood are fairly small. I think if you look at them in terms of the site plan and the GIS, there's a lot of houses in the neighborhood that would have a lot of challenges trying to comply with what the zoning is. So we don't think that the granting of this variance is gonna be a detriment to the neighborhood. I understand that this project was presented prior to, maybe a meeting or so ago. And I think there was some difficulties in understanding what this would look like, because there were no real elevations shown. So I prepared some 3D views and some elevations to give you a sense of what the actual building would look like when it was attached to their home. So again, I think our position is, is that, you know, there is some space between the property line and the pavement. So even though we are talking about the distance to the property line, I think that extra distance between the property line and the actual pavement would give it a sense that there is actually more in the front yard than what would be shown on a map. And again, looking at the neighborhood, looking at the other homes around it, it seems that this wouldn't really be a detriment to the neighborhood.
I don't have any questions. I think mine were answered through the drawings. Christine, did you have any questions?
No, no questions.
Art?
I have just a quick question, and I appreciate your updates. It's much, it's much clearer. But I do have a question. From the, the setback, the garage to the edge of the fence, it looks like it's ten feet here, if I can correct.
To the edge of the fence?
From the end of the garage, right, to the, they'll go over to your other.
Here?
Yeah. So if you go down to, isn't that the fence, that squared off section?
Fence line right here?
Right. So from the bottom of the fence line, which is closest to the road, to the end of the garage, which is closest to the road, that's approximately ten feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so, thank you.
Linda? Tony?
I'll have your.
We're recused on this one.
Okay. Yes, and thank you for the updated drawing. It was very helpful. So if there's no questions, we can open it up to the audience. Does anybody in attendance have any questions or comments?
Anyone on the Zoom wish to comment on this application? Zoom, yeah, yeah. Been practicing that for a few years now.
Okay. Doesn't look like there's any questions. So I, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So that motion carries. Again, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
That moves us to number five, Travance Go Health Urgent Care.
Good evening.
Guys, can you state your name, please?
My name is Pedro Vasman. I represent Travance Go Health.
Okay. Words, I'll swear. You in?
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Did you wanna update us on what the application was?
The application was for secondary signs on the corner of the building. And we did some survey addressing some of the concerns from the county. One of the concerns was, you know, they don't want to have other stores with the more than one sign. With the, within our survey, we did find that the, there, there is multiple stores, especially the corner ones and multiple shopping centers that do have more than one sign. There's other stores, there's a standalone building that also has even like three signs on, on their buildings. And the other concern is like, there's, there's clients already complaining that they can't find the place. I know it's a new place in the town. I know it's, the town also is getting busier with outsiders, you know, seeking, you know, outdoor sports, you know, so they don't know the town. So the client is just wants to place urgent care only, you know, I mean, just the word urgent care on that corner. Just so you make it easier for, for people to find the place.
Last time we asked them for the visual, which is
Correct.
We asked, correct?
Yes, and we did not get that. I didn't get it. This is all we got. That we were asking for.
Are you looking for a photo simulation?
Photo simulation, yes, like we, from other people. I thought that's what we had asked for.
You would?
No. From a car, you know, looking, coming down, right, from various perspectives on Route nine approaching the, the facility.
Correct. We did submit that.
I don't have that. Oh, there they are. Never mind. No, is this you? Yes, okay. You are in there, Tony. The black and white, that's right. But that's what we asked for. I think that was, there wasn't anything else, was there?
No.
Okay. And you, are you aware that the county's response came back as a denial? Did you see that?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Did you have any response to that, or?
No, because like, it was a recommendation of denial, you know, leaving up to the board to decide. That's what's my understanding.
Okay.
And like, one of the reasons were that they didn't want And like, one of the reasons were that, uh, they didn't want more than, you know, stores with more than one sign. With our survey, we did find multiple stores with more than one sign, especially with standalone buildings or corner stores on the shopping centers. Most of them has two signs.
Okay, I don't have any questions, Christine.
Would you be eliminating all of the signs that you have in your window?
I'm sorry?
Would you be eliminating all of the signs that you have in your window? Well, you have a lot of signs in the window that say urgent care.
Uh, we would like to keep them as well, that's part of the brand look, but if that's the case, we, we also open to that.
That's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Art?
Hey, yeah, based on its location, I don't really see that this sign is going to help any. The sign in the front of the building is massive. And all the signs in the window are also a real beacon to say, hey, here I am, you know, this is what I offer. I just. I'm, I'm not a big fan of this, so I would have to, any comments other than?
Okay. Linda?
Um, I agree that, um, I don't see the, the benefit to the second sign. Cause you do have signs in the window and you have the sign that's there, so I, I agree with that.
Tony asked?
Yeah, I, I tend to, uh, look at this the same way. Also the fact that you, uh, you can't get to your site without going into the shopping plaza. I mean, if you had visibility from the Dunkin' Donuts site, um, well, I guess you could walk in from there, but you certainly can't drive in from there. So it seems to me that the one, the one you already have facing Route 9 is sufficient.
Any answer?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. Um, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment on this application? Let's see.
Anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, you can say it, it's, you know, it's alright.
Is there anybody on Zoom that would like to make comments? We don't see anybody? Okay, so I make a motion to.
So, Ed, you've heard, um, from three people now on the board, and it seems unlikely that the variance will be granted this evening. We do have some missing members. Um, I don't know if there's anything that you would like to add either at this time or at a future time to, um, before, otherwise if the board closes the hearing, it seems like there'll be a denial on your application this evening.
Yeah, I would like to, you know, the board to consider, especially, you know, knowing that, uh, there's multiple stores, like it's not one or two or three, it's, it's almost every corner store does have more than one sign on the walls. So it's, there's a front and a side, side, at least in some standalone buildings, as per our survey, has given three signs. So I would just, would like the board to consider that and make it fair for everyone.
I think my, my concern is that of all the pictures that were provided and the signs that I'm familiar with, all are on, and I just looked it up, they're all on driveways or drive paths. This is in a parking lot area for another business. So if you look at any one of the other ones that are listed, there's a drive around, so it enters into another, uh, another parking lot and, uh, something else. Um, this is facing a parking lot into another building, and I don't know if it necessarily is apples-to-apples type example, so. So I'll just refer back to Lisa's comments, I think you can kind of understand the temperature. Is there something that? Yes. I'm not 100% positive you understood what Lisa, the council said.
Right, I think the point that Lisa was making, just, uh, to clarify, is that there, that because the county did not recommend the denial, in order for the board to grant the variance, if it were inclined to do so, it would need to have a super majority. So we would need to have five votes in favor of granting the variance. There are five people here tonight. Um, you've heard the comments. We often will allow, you know, if, if you would like to provide some additional information for a future meeting, maybe if we had a full board of seven, you know, that, the, the numbers may be better for you, but it's up to you. You know, it's, we would need you to, you know, tell us that you want to, uh, adjourn the public hearing and, uh, that you'd want to provide perhaps some more information for the board, so that there's a reason to adjourn the public hearing.
I would say not, I, I think it, you know, I understood most of you guys are inclined to deny. So I don't, I don't know if I can convince in you guys otherwise.
Okay. Okay. Um, so I move to close the public hearing for item number five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, you can wait around until the end or call the zoning administrator in the morning for a response.
Alright, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. Item number seven, 115 Violet Ave, six, I'm sorry, six, 115 Violet Avenue, just moving right along. Hi, can you please state your name and swear you in?
Good evening, good evening. My name is Martin Chomoro.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
And will you be testifying as well?
I'm just his realtor, so maybe I'll.
March, why don't we swear you in?
Speak into the microphone while you're there, too, please.
Why don't we swear you in and then?
My name's Bonnie Ritter.
Bonnie, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Why don't you explain your application, so?
Yes, I'm seeking to extend my driveway and, uh, to a bit wider it, and then like have a 30 by 10, uh, turnaround. Cause seems like, you know, when I back it up from my house to, uh, busy room, it's 9G, like in the mornings, so it's kind of crowded, it's dangerous. So that's why I'm looking for needing to kind of have that extension on the side of the driveway, and we'd like to know how wide I can make it, uh, the driveway itself. It is gravel right now, I'm planning on block topping it, you know, if I'm gonna grant it the permit for it.
So it's currently gravelled and you're looking to black top it?
Correct.
Okay. Black top the whole thing all the way up, because I think on the side it was also?
Yes, exactly, the turnaround here, because it gets, especially with the rain, whether we have a lot of flooded, it's kind of soft or you can't kind of go into that because it's kind of sink. So I wanted to make it right, you know, hire contractors to do the driveway, block topping all the way.
Okay. So will it be a turnaround or will it be a parking space for an additional vehicle?
It was a turnaround, but I got my three daughters that day visiting from Albany, sometimes we get like a Thanksgiving or a occasion like that, so it gets crowded there, that's why I would like to use, to turn around maybe a car or two, park, but not all the time. Emergencies. Yeah, especially holidays, that's how we'll get together.
How many cars currently are in the residence?
Right now it's, uh, three cars.
Three cars. And how many can the driveway fit in it, in it, in it's existing?
For now it fits three cars, but again, when I got my, you know, three daughters visiting, then it becomes six cars.
That's all the questions.
It's not just that, you know, I got also like family that visiting, so you will see a car, more than three cars there, just, you know, visitors.
Okay, so, that's all the questions I have. Christine?
Is there any reason then you couldn't make a space, um, to the right of the garage, rather than in the front of the house?
Well, I don't know how that would work, though, you see, you have to kind of, I need the turnaround thing.
Right, well, for parking it would, it would work, but.
Yeah, I could do that, you know, I'm flexible on that if I can.
Wet back here. And if you were to use the, the front for a turnaround, could you make that narrower?
I really would like to have, like I said, extra space for your parking, for visitors.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question, Chrissy, what's the code, it's currently 15 feet wide, what is the code, 20?
The 15 feet.
Is the code?
Yeah.
Okay. So if it doubled the width instead of making one turnaround, one lane to park, it would still be out of compliance, right?
Um, extending it anywhere in the front there would be out of.
Would need a variance?
Would need a variance, yeah.
Okay. Art?
I have a couple of questions. I think you're indicating that the area up by the garage is too wet to do anything with, that you already have a section there that you're using that's got a branch to it, that pulls up alongside the garage. You're indicating it on here.
Which was that, on the right-hand side?
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't go all the way, there's just a, that tile was before, from the edge of the garage back. So nothing going beyond that, towards the back.
But going back to the previous question, there's really no reason. So apparently it's not that wet there, you're on pretty high ground there. Why couldn't you just extend that back along the garage? Fill it in, extend it back instead of parking in the front, because you're indicating that you want to park in the front yard pretty strongly. And that's not allowed.
Well, if I can go wider than, uh, 15 feet, then I don't have to do that extra space there, because I would like double, double.
How much wide?
He's asking if he can do a double driveway all the way up, like as neighbors.
You would have to get a variance, you had to come back, you'd have to re, re-advertise, right, for variance for a wider driveway, rather than the?
Right, so what's on the table today is what's proposed, trying to legalize the gravel. Um, it, from what I'm hearing from the board, it doesn't sound like they're inclined for that little bit. I don't think doing a wider driveway all the way would be, um, I, you can ask the board, but I don't think that would be something they would be inclined to do. What, what is allowed is if you put a parking area next to the garage, so that it goes back that way. And you could have, I, the board might be more amenable to a turnaround there, rather than up by the, from the street.
May I say something?
Sure.
Okay, um, you're asking him to put in an area next to the garage, but norm, normally you'd bring up, say, your three cars, and say you parked one next to the garage. Those two cars would block you from turning around and pulling out onto 9G.
Right, it's not that wide, so that, I don't think it's possible that that would work.
Go ahead.
Okay. This, I mean, I live right up that way, so. And you're right, some of the driveways are wider, but there are, I don't think we have any recently put in a turnaround slash parking area in the front yard, because we really frown on that. Anybody parking in the front yard, that's not something we really allow.
You don't let, allow people to park in front of their garages?
No, that's not what I'm saying. Make a parking area in the front yard, which is what he wants to do. You're allowed to park on the driveway, but to make a parking slash turnaround, and he's leaning more toward parking, based on his testimony, um, that's something that we, most of us frown on.
Okay.
Because it's, it's against.
I know he didn't apply for a double driveway, um, but would you allow him to put, if he applied?
Does he need it double wide, or can he come in with some happy medium?
I don't know.
Yeah, if I'm allowed to.
Which one, a double wide or happy medium or medium?
Can I make a suggestion here? Sorry, that's true. And again, tell me if I'm wrong, but since it sounds like we probably aren't going to pass this the way it is, would you be willing to stake out what you want to do, so our next field trip, we could, could see exactly what you'd want to do with the drabble? Could you stake out half again and then double, so put like just three stakes, and then three stakes, and give us a, a, a better visual of what you want to do? You may be more inclined to get that than.
Do you want to rethink what you're gonna ask, or think?
Do you understand, do you understand the request?
Christine, I'm gonna allow you to clarify what you're gonna figure out.
Okay.
You're going to rethink it?
Yeah.
We're gonna rethink it, if that's okay?
That's fine, it's fine. But you can ask the rest of, you know, you don't have to tell us.
My question is, is that gravelled there now?
Yes.
What are they going to do with that, if they do an alternative design? Cause that looks like where they.
That would have to come up.
Right, right, well, he should know that.
Well, that's, yeah.
Yeah, you would have to remove the gravel if.
The area that he grabbled is so wet, I'm sure the gravel will disappear.
But, just a comment, um, I'm, I'm kind of sympathetic to wanting to turn around before going out onto Violet Avenue, okay? I don't know if I'm 30 feet sympathetic to turning around.
Right.
Going on, onto, uh, Violet Avenue. It seems to me that's an excessive, excessive amount of space for a, for a turnaround. All right? If, if it was, if you wanted to go back that 10 feet and let's say, you know, for, just for the sake of argument, 10 by 10, 10 by 8, and that would ensure you the ability to turn around before you went out, you know?
But he's, he's still indicating he wants to park the cars there.
Well, no, that's the point, I, I, I would not be in favor of you parking your car there. I'd be in favor of you using solely as a turnaround.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that, you know, because definitely I need that, like I said, for safety reason. If you say 10 by 10, then yeah, I'll take that, because.
As a young girl.
That's just an example, I'm not saying it should be 10 by 10, but.
Right, right.
I don't think it should be 10 by 30, is what I'm getting at.
Right.
Right, so there's a couple of things here, the driveway by law can only be 15 feet without a variance. So what I would suggest is that you adjourn the public hearing, perhaps come back with a modification of the up-front area to make that smaller, and maybe something if you needed to, around the garage area, to make that larger if you needed parking or turnaround there also. Um, but you propose some alternates, um, in time for the next deadline for the meeting, so that the board can have its, if we need to revise the public notice to allow for a different variance, we need to have that published.
When is the deadline?
Sonia, when's the?
Seventeenth.
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 April 17th is the deadline for the submission for the next meeting. So you.
May I ask?
Sure.
You know, drives you guys crazy. Since you've been asked to stake out, number one, are you ever at home? Because we do our field trips on Thursdays, half of us, and then half of us come out, I think it's Sunday. Would it ever, is there ever anyone home that we'd actually talk to about this? To, I mean, I know you probably work, but is there anybody around? Cause that also helps a great deal.
I, I can be, I work, but I can be, I can take time off if you tell me what time.
Well, we're pretty.
Then we can kind of see like what my options are, we talk about what's.
Well, the Thursday field trip, just so you know, we start out at 12 o'clock, we can go to your place first, if we had to, if you want to, you know.
This Thursday?
Thir- no.
No, it's Thursday before the meetings.
Okay.
I did see somebody on a Saturday, just to, just to get that out there. I talked to two people on a Saturday.
Yeah, the only problem with you doing it during the site visit is then if changes or edits are made, there'll have to be another meeting after that, um, other than the proposal, to notice a variance, so.
That'll push about two months.
Right, so what would be helpful is if we had, you know, a proposal by the 17th, and then we can decide after that if you want to arrange for a site visit.
So, again, as you, as the council said, if, if you're willing to stake out what you want to do, and maybe, maybe stake out a smaller turnaround, if you will, whatever you want to call it, stake that out as well. So again, the visuals help a great deal, rather than just a flat piece of property.
So you would be coming on the 11th of April?
No, this, the 17th is the submission date. The, they're talking about before the May meet, the Thursday before the May meeting.
So the May meeting is May 13th, I just pulled up my calendar.
Okay.
So it looks like the 9th is the, right, is that Thursday?
So he's got the redo. So he's got the redo his papers by the seventeenth.
Right, papers by the seventeenth, site visit by the night, the, what did you say? I'm sorry.
May ninth.
May ninth.
That's what we come around. Again, that's your, your decision, but it would, I think it would help you. You got the dates, right? Yes, yes. Does that sound like...
Sounds like a plan, something that could help you, hopefully.
He'll rethink.
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. While we're here, um, does anybody have any, from the, the audience have any comments for this application?
We've only got one person on Zoom. Believe that person was looking to comment on this. Right, was that trying to, my bossy previous, no? No. Any comments on Zoom? No.
Okay. So I look to adjourn this to the...
May third.
May, May thirteenth?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, uh, meeting?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number seven, uh, Twenty Creek Bend Road. Mind stating your name?
My name is Keith Payton.
I'm sorry, what was your last name?
Payton, P-A-T-O-N.
Mr. Payton, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Okay, would you mind explaining your application?
Yeah, so, um, I'm a contractor and our client contracted us to build a garage. The garage is a twenty by twenty. I have the plan here. I didn't prepare anything larger, but, um, I have it on screen I can share.
You can have it here, or you can, if you're on Zoom, you can also share your screen, yeah.
I'm not on Zoom.
You're not on Zoom. I think we have, everyone has it, right, in front of them, so I think we're okay, yeah?
Okay, um, so the per, so I understand especially from this meeting that you cannot park in the yard. Or, you know, there's not supposed to be cars on, on the side. This is a, I forget what you refer to it as, a dual entry or a two-front?
Two-fronts, yeah.
Three fronts.
Three fronts, three fronts, okay. But three roads.
So they have their existing garage and driveway for the, that'll function as, uh, for their cars. This garage is simply for storage and also the husband has a hobby of, uh, like a kit car building. So that'll be inside of there. And I think that's more, you know, this is a decorative piece. It would be nicer than having that out in the yard. Or in the front driveway. So this would be simply for that and storage. Uh, lawn equipment. They have a pretty sizable lot there, so drive mower, that kind of thing. What's being requested is for a, it's definitely within the setbacks. And what is, the request would be also to have an entry from that side of the street, which is Millbank Road. And just a gravel driveway, just so that they can enter into the garage from there. Rather than, if, I do have pictures of the rest of the property and it is impossible to get there any other way. You've got, uh, multiple paver steps going up a large, you know, very, uh, steep grade, a big hill. There's, there's no other way to enter. So... I don't know what else to say. It's my first meeting with you, so.
Lucky guy.
Thank you. Thanks.
You're doing okay.
Thanks.
Um, was this the one that we were waiting for, the, the department, highway department, you have to get a curb cut, a curb cut?
So I have a question about that. Is that just a general term? Because there's, there's no curb?
Anytime, right?
Yeah.
Anytime you...
It's a general term.
General term, okay, curb cut.
And ask them for the town highway, right?
Yeah, so I mean, if it was approved, then he would still have to go to the highway to get a permit, but...
It's a process.
I don't see an issue.
Approval, it doesn't have to be a...
He doesn't know that.
Right.
Is the condition that it would be approved by us in order to move forward there or does it matter?
They're kind of independent, actually.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really matter which happens first.
Okay. So if we gave him approval and the town says no, then it's...
Right. The town said okay and we said no, same result.
Yeah, you got a parking lot, you got a highway, no place to go.
So assuming we're all going to say yes, then let's, so, okay, um, I guess the client said if they absolutely cannot have a street side access, then what can they do? But they definitely need the space. I just, it would be a mess any other, I don't know how else they would access it, so.
So, again, Chris, I think you have to help me with it. I'm sorry, am I speaking out of turn here?
Yeah, no. Yes, no, go ahead.
Yes, no, thank you. Remember, Paul's coming back, you know? Okay, so, just, just out of curiosity, if we, could they come in from Creek Bend? Parallel to the other driveway? I mean, no matter what, the, the structure, we're in front of the house.
Yeah.
So they could come in from Creek Bend, right?
You mean, add another dri, add another drive off of Creek Bend?
Off the close to the corner.
I would say no.
Yeah.
I don't think the property is going to be able to...
You, we'd have to cut a massive amount of earth and remove it and build retaining walls on, but it'd be ma, it would be hideous.
The hills were that big, I don't remember.
Get, am, am I allowed to come over there or just to show the?
It's okay with me.
Right, if it's okay with you, then that's...
I entered the venture.
Don't be so afraid of us. We're not really, well, we care sometimes.
So this is the, this is where we're requesting.
Right, what's the back?
But this is Creek Bend. So that's the driveway and this hill, and the picture doesn't adjust.
I don't think, I don't think we even noticed that berm the other day.
Yeah, and then you've got
Okay, not here either.
All the steps, so it's really high here.
We can move the house.
I would, I would take the project.
Anyone else on the board like to see the pictures that were just shown?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, sure. So the request, yeah, the request is for here, it's just flat and it goes right through, right? But this is Creek Bend and if you look...
Yeah, big retaining.
Yeah, so that this whole...
It's a hill, right?
Yeah. I don't see another way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a question.
So, can I ask my question? So the existing garage will still function as an existing garage, right?
Yes.
This will just be, um, like an accessory garage for a novelty?
And, and storage, lawn equipment.
And you said the driveway, uh, would not be, would be gravel and not paved?
Correct.
So it wouldn't be an everyday driveway of coming and going and...
No, not at all.
Okay. Any questions?
And just to add to that and follow up, so there would be no parking on that gravel driveway?
None whatsoever.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
And they, and they made that very clear and, and I know they're not just saying it, it's for sure they're not going to use it for that purpose.
Thank you.
Linda, any questions? Tony?
No questions.
Okay. Um, thank you. Would anybody in the audience like to comment on this application?
I can.
Art, is there any? Just because it's gravel now doesn't mean they'll never pave in the future though. Which is okay with me, we can just...
Unless you made it a condition, right?
You can do that, but I'm not sure what the zoning purpose of making it, whether it's great, so...
We can discuss that later, too. Yes.
I have a question.
Oh, boy.
Would you, is it favorable to have it paved or that's what we're trying to avoid?
I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference to me, one way or another, yeah.
Well, sure, it's certainly not included in the scope, so if they wanted to pave it and you would approve it, that's another thing, but at least for gravel would be the, I think, the best.
I mean, if it's not being used very often, gravel might...
That was probably fine, but I think that was when it gets back there. I don't remember how much that section gets.
Yeah, I don't know. You guys were on the side, I wasn't.
Also, I've been, and there are a lot of ties, I'm not sure. I'm good. Okay. Uh, again, anybody in the audience like to comment on this application?
The one person on Zoom? No? All right.
Okay, thank you very much. So I move to close the public hearing for item number seven.
So is there another step back? I'm sorry, what happens now after this?
You can either sit and wait for it. I move to close. We have to close this, so yes. I move, I make a motion to close the public hearing for item number seven.
Second.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So, uh, we're going to close the public hearing. We're going to finish going down the agenda. We'll make a decision tonight, so you can hang around until after that, uh, find out by the end of the meeting. Or you can call the zoning administrator in the morning for the decision.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Okay.
And we're not offended if you don't want to wait. It's okay, we understand.
Second time around is probably easier. That moves us to item number eight, two twenty-four Manchester Road.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how's it going?
I think you've been with us before, but why don't you state your name and we'll...
My name's Steve Engelhardt. And I have handouts if I can approach.
Let me just swear you in, please.
Oh, absolutely.
That's okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Engelhardt, why don't you explain your application?
Okay, one's for the shed and one's for the fence. And there's enough for everyone. And the pictures you'll have to just pass around. Thank you.
Yeah.
I appreciate it. May be helpful once you get all the paperwork.
Even color-coded them. Even color-coded them, how good is this? Thank you. Okay, ready when you are?
Sure. Would you like to start with the fence?
Wherever you would like to start.
Let's start with the fence.
Okay.
The fence is seventeen years old. And the reason why I had the fence installed there is for privacy. There's two bedrooms. I'm at the bottom of the hill and Spy Hill and McIntosh Drive. Everybody comes by and they could easily look into my bedroom windows. There used to be a bus stop right there. And that was the main reason why I wanted to get that fence put in because people would park their cars right there alongside the road. And all the kids, the cars, the people, walking their dogs, could all easily just look, uh, right down into my property, into my, um, bedroom windows. And I hired a professional contractor. I assumed that he knew what he was doing. I had no idea seventeen years ago that a five and a half, six-foot fence wasn't allowed.
So this is the fence that's there now?
That's correct.
Usually?
Yep.
Legitimizing. Okay.
I'm sorry?
You want to talk about the shed?
Oh, yeah, let's talk about the shed. All right, um... Back in oh four, when I purchased the house for my mother, I had a bunch of s, uh, open, uh, CO or open, um, inspections or whatever it's called. But since then, I've, uh, accommodated the town by getting the COs for the shed, the ten by twelve and the six by six add-on. Starting back in oh nine, the records on number two, the records to date do not reveal violations for any of the above mentioned property. And my position is as of last year, when the building, uh, the apartment came out and inspected, they didn't say, um, that the sheds were illegal. And now I just want to put a smaller shed on there. So that's what I'm here for.
Okay. So the, the application tonight for the shed?
Yes.
Is it to legalize the shed that's there? You're not adding another second shed?
There's nothing there now.
And is it that pad that's...
It's just a concrete pad for a shed to be put on it.
So the shed, the one that pictured, that was removed?
Yes.
Oh, all right, that makes sense.
I should have had a picture of the removed shed, sorry.
Nope, that's, because that's what I understood. And in the middle of the yard is like a carport? Is that off the driveway?
Yeah, 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 that's a wood shed, starts, I put storage stuff in there now, shovels and bricks.
Is that off the driveway or that's...
Oh, no, that's in the middle of the yard.
Okay. Okay. I don't, I don't have any more questions. Christine?
Now, how big is the shed that you're going to?
Um, I gave you the information, but ten by sixteen.
Ten by sixteen.
So that's roughly six feet, uh, smaller.
Ten by sixteen or ten by twelve?
The old one was ten by twelve plus six by six, right?
So this would be ten by what? Sixteen. Sixteen.
That's all, thank you.
Art, any questions? No. No? Okay, there's still time. Linda, do you have any questions?
No.
Tony S., any questions?
Uh, no.
Art, second call?
No.
Pretty smart guy tonight, Paul coming back, I told you that. Thank you for the visuals. Does anybody in the audience have any questions? Make any, I'm sorry, make any comments?
Sure.
Want to come join us? If you could state your name and...
Yeah, hi, I'm Ann Sherchin. I'm the sixth ward town councilperson.
Hi, how are you?
And you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
What would you like to say?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that Steve is in a unique situation here where he actually has roof frontage on three sides of his lot. And his front door actually faces fifty-five, so for all the rest of us, this would be his backyard. Because this is the opposite side of the house from the front door, so it'd be considered his backyard. And fortunately, it has McIntosh Road there. And as far as the fence go, it doesn't impede the traffic at all. It's far enough away from the corner that anybody coming down McIntosh has good visibility of the intersection and anybody, the only other people they encounter would be people coming down Spy Hill. And anybody coming in is either going to make a right or a left, and they're most likely going to be making a right to go down. So again, there's just no way they're going to have any problems with anybody crossing their paths. And obviously, there haven't been any accidents due to this fence that's been there.
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. So the fence is really not a problem. And as far as the shed goes, Steve does everything in good taste and it's far enough away from the road and in the center of the yard that I don't think it'd be a distraction for the neighborhood either.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm buying a professional shed from a company here in the town, so it's already been approved, um, from buildings.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ann. Any other questions?
Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments?
Brian?
No, I guess not.
Anyone on Zoom? Still no, okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. You didn't close it.
Got to close the public here.
Oh, oh, oh. Sorry, stop asking questions. So I move to close the public hearing for item number eight.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. That brings us to item number nine, uh, forty-eight Springside PV. How are you doing?
Good afternoon.
Could you state your name?
My name is Dwayne Hibbert.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
How are you, Mr. Gorb? Can you, uh, explain to us your application?
So we are currently doing an addition, um, a two-story addition to an office structure which is located at forty-eight Springside. Um, and that addition is going to be abutting an existing accessory... And that addition is going to be abutting an existing accessory structure. The existing accessory structure received a variance in, um, in two thousand and eleven of one-point-eight feet. But because we are doing the addition, and that's going to be, um, as I said, abutting the existing accessory structure. That variance is going to be, going to have to be revisited. Between the existing accessory structure and the existing, um, office building. Uh, there exists a ramp that we're gonna be removing. And, um, we're gonna be placing a walkway to the east of the existing, um, office structure.
Is it?
Pretty much that is, yeah, that's it.
Okay. So is this, it wasn't taken into account, now there's another adjustment to what the original variance was?
The original variance was for an accessory structure, and now they're attaching it to the primary structure, making it all a primary structure.
Okay.
The primary structure.
Okay. That was really the question that I had. Christine, do you have any questions?
This is office space?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
This is, so this is just a cement pad that's gonna tie the two buildings together?
I'm sorry, say again?
It's gonna be a pad that ties the two buildings together?
Correct. No question. Okay, Linda?
No questions.
Tony S.?
Uh, no questions.
Is there anyone in the audience remaining that would have a question or comment? Anyone on Zoom? Does not look like it. Thank you. Okay. So I move to close the public hearing for item number nine. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So that brings us to item number nine. Oh, sorry, item number ten. Six-sixty-one Duchess Turnpike, Twin翼 Wings. Oh, that's who it is.
Yep.
Would you please state your name for the applicant?
Evening, Brian Watts from Days to Co's Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant.
Brian, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to provide tonight is true and complete to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Could you explain your application to us?
If I may share my screen?
Sure.
Um, the applicant has been, this project's been around, around the boards here, playing ping pong for the last couple of years. Just trying to get our timing correct in the, between the variances, the building permit, and the planning board approval. Uh, we've gone through all the necessary steps, and have got, uh, submitted to the building department for construction. Of an addition to the, to six-sixty-one Duchess Turnpike, the existing Verizon building. Again, this is the Verizon, uh, renovated as back in two thousand twenty-ish, I wanna say. This is the, uh, Service Center Goodyear, this is, uh, Once Upon a Time with Blockbuster, from the last time I was there. And we, our variances have run out once again. We have, if I can go through quick those variances, which were previously granted. We're seeking a, um, this, where was I? The eleven-point-two feet from the property line for this addition off the back. This is the existing Verizon, it's a, this is approximately eleven-point-two feet, we're maintaining that here. The... Front property line is, shall not be less than a hundred feet. And this is also frontage, and this is the fifty-one feet. Am I reading correctly?
That's right.
Yeah, the hundred front yard and fifty-one feet is provided. The hundred-foot rear yard, which would be back here, we're prosing seventy-three-point-six feet. Uh, this is the Casper Kill Creek, uh, it's vegetated, this is the closest building, that former Blockbuster video location. And we are seeking to have a variance for the lighting, which is existing. Bring up the variance plan. Again, these, these light fixtures are all existing, uh, they were at the time of the renovation for Verizon. And obviously, we're right on the property line, so there, it would be impossible to maintain any kind of useful lighting at that foothandle level. So, again, the applicant has submitted the building permit. Uh, that's been approved pending, uh, reapproval of these variances, which had been, uh, which has expired. While we were going through the planning board process, the building permit process, and so on. And that's essentially it.
Okay, so you're not looking for anything additional other than what has been previously granted, correct?
Correct, this is the same site plan that is on file with the town already for the site plan approval. And this is what was submitted as part of the, uh, in, in the building permit application process.
Okay. I don't have any questions. Christine?
No questions.
Art? What, no questions? Linda?
No questions.
Tony S.?
And, uh, no questions from me.
Okay. Is there any comments from anybody in the audience? You were the last person on Zoom, so there's nobody on Zoom. So I move to close the public hearing for item number ten.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we need a break, or we must...
I see what just got, couldn't hurt to go.
Okay. Alright.
Aye. Yeah.
You wanna take a five-minute break?
Yeah, do you still have that item eleven on there?
Uh, yeah, that's, uh, for, uh, lead agency, right?
Yeah, we do that at the end.
Alright. Do you wanna take a five-minute break?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
So...
So I move that we break for five minutes, let's meet back at seven forty-five.
Second? Second?
Any, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Why do you keep looking at me?
Okay, so I call the meeting back into session. Uh, so we're just going around the agenda to, to go with the folks that are here. So if you're here, we'll try and take care of your first. So first on the list, we have number four, forty-nine Honeywell Lane. So what we have is, um, the applicant's made a couple revisions based on requests, looking to add a garage. Uh, variances for, uh, distance from the road. And if we all know that area, there's not a lot of people that, that, the property's down there. So I don't have a concern with it, I can just keep them, first think of the neighborhood. Does anybody else have any concerns or thoughts? Sorry. Oh, I see, you're correct. Are you okay with that? He has passive behavior. Art, do you have any concerns with this?
None.
Linda?
No, it does jut out considerably more than the other garages, cuz I drove around today and looked, but I really don't have any concern.
I think what I, I think what Art had described too, is it doesn't matter any further than the pool or the fence.
Right, 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 it doesn't, it's, it's less than the pool and the fence.
Okay. Okay. So I offer these findings to you, Dr. Carr. Uh, whether, whether undesirable character will be produced, or change will be produced in the character of the neighborhood, or detriment to nearby property. Uh, the proposed changes are consistent with other residents in the neighborhood. Whether the benefit of the applicant can be achieved by some other method feasible. The owner is seeking to expand his driveway, storage capabilities, um, and given the small size of the lots, I don't really see any other method. And they have proposed other things, and I think this is a very healthy compromise. Whether the request of the area variance is substantial, I think yes, it is. However, again, given the small lot sizes, I think what they're looking to accomplish can't be done in any other way. Whether the proposed, uh, variance, it will give an adverse effect that, or impact to the physical environment conditions to the neighborhood, there's no evidence of. And whether the alleged, uh, difficulty is self-created, it is, however, that is no reason to, uh, deny, and I offer those findings. Christine? Would you like to add to the motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number four. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? We have one refusal. So that motion's carried. Thank you again for the drawing decision. That brings us to, you stole someone's skip, so...
Yeah, yeah, we'll go right to the end of the thing.
So we are number eight. Two twenty-four Manchester Road.
Aye.
This is a shed, um, and fence application. So this is two variances, correct, please? Um, so we have here's a legalized, uh, the application to legalize a fence. And, um, to add a shed on the existing pad, uh, make that a little bit bigger. Um, I will attest that in our visit, I did multiple turnarounds to try and get a vision of the property. And it is on three roads. It is on three, three roads, so it's kind of an awkward property, but I think it doesn't change the characteristic of the neighborhood. Um, and I think that, um, it'll, it'll actually make it look better, so. Um, does anybody else have any comments? Okay. So I offer these, uh, these findings. Whether desire to the change, desire, under, whether an undesirable change will be produced to the characteristic, character of the neighborhood. Uh, it's consistent with other homes in the neighborhood, and it is, um, that'll achieve what the applicant is looking to achieve. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other, some, some other method. Uh, technically, no, I don't think so, because there are multiple frontages, uh, on the property. And the fence is existing, um, and they're just looking to legalize it. Uh, whether the request for the variance is substantial, I don't believe so, because the, the, it's quite a sizable lot. Whether the proposed variance, uh, will have an adverse effect or impact to the physical environment or conditions of the neighborhood, there's no evidence of that. Um, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created, uh, yes, but that would be no reason to deny. I offer those findings. Art, would you like to?
Certainly, for you, certainly. Okay, I, we can do this as one or two.
Two. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearings. And results of site visits by board members. In approving this variant, with these variances, board adopts those findings as set forth. We got a finding from you? We got a finding on that.
He just read it.
Set by the chair.
Second?
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
These are variances, correct?
Okay, alright, yeah, so. Okay, isn't this all, we're good? Thank you. Thank you, sweetheart.
They're both variant in class.
Yes, good to go.
Very much.
Sure. Thank you for the extra information.
Wanna go back to number seven, uh, Twenty Creek Bend Road? Alright?
Yeah.
Uh, right.
So, uh, number seven, uh, this is attached to, uh, so this one was very interesting. I think after a little explanation, it kinda made it a little clearer. In our drive, there's actually an adjacent property, which has a very similar setup, there's a driveway that goes all the way through the property. So it has an, an driveway on that side as well, so we were using that as a determination, the, the explanation made it a little clearer. Um, I think what they're looking to do, as long as it's not a driveway and something that you can park on, that I don't have any concerns with it. Does anybody else have any kind of opinion?
No, I agree.
Okay. So I offer these findings, uh, whether the undesir, when, whether an undesirable change will be produced to the characteristic of the neighborhood. There's a lot, uh, right adjacent to it, which had a similar driveway setup, but that has cars parked on it. Um, and it seems to be more of a fruit path, so I think that this is less, um, less something, uh, encroachment. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, uh, method feasible? Uh, no, as the applicant described, the layout of the land would make it a little, uh, difficult. Uh, and this is attached garage, and given the configuration of the property, and the fact that there are three sub, three fronts, it would make it very difficult. Whether the request for the variance is substantial, uh, mathematically, no, given the lot size. Whether the proposed variance, uh, will have an adverse effect or impact on physical environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district, there's no evidence of such. Um, and whether alleged difficulty was self-created, uh, yes, but this is no reason to deny, uh, for those findings. Oh, your name?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. The decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing. And results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, that motion is...
Just make sure you, uh, contact the highway department.
You're a free man, so you're approved by the zoning board. But as Chris said, the highway department's supposed to pull the curb cut, the driveway.
Town, town highway.
Town highway, right across the street.
Thank you. So nine, we're gonna move forward to nine, coming this way to you. So this is a, a variance for an already-approved structure.
So the setback for, um, an accessory structure is less than the setback for a primary structure. So once they connected this building to the primary structure, then they needed a larger setback. So it, it's not changing the building at all.
Thank you.
It's just being connected.
So there's really no difference to this, other than what you've been approved, other than...
You know, they're filling in that space between the garage and the existing building to add space, more additional office space. But, you know, they have the plans that are architecturally and fitting and all that, so.
So I don't really see much of a difference in variance that was already approved. Does anybody feel different?
You have a staff report, so you don't have to do the findings. So someone just has to make a motion if they're comfortable with what's in the staff report?
Tony, can you make this motion, as a staff report?
Okay. Okay, uh, I move to approve the variance requested, uh, in item number nine. For the connection of the, uh, office building to the, to the existing garage. And, uh, which would retain the, uh, the current, uh, setback previously approved. So move. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, based on the, uh, based on the findings set forth in the staff report. Sorry about that.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we need a second.
Oh, I did a second. Second. Second, Art. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion is carried.
Oh, yeah, I guess we could do Brian next, now at number ten.
Okay. Oh yeah, I guess we could do Brian next, number ten, okay. Okay. It's the Planet Wings, number ten, Christine, can you make this?
Sure.
Um so here we have basically renewal of a variance that was already in place, they just wanna move forward like with the planning. Uh approved planning, uh so I don't see any. I don't see any concerns with that, since it's already approved. Does anybody feel different?
Okay, yeah, and you could say in this one, now you have the staff report, but basically the prior resolution has all the findings and I have the driver for prior resolution as. And for the findings.
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number ten. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing. And results of site visits by board members. In approving this variance, uh the board adopts the findings um in a prior resolution. I can't even read my writing, okay, and and. Um in the staff report.
Second?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Okay, this is gonna be, thank you. Back to me, Tom. This is number one, this one is gonna be you, so. This is what I'm struggling with, so we do have, this is uh some of those before us more than once. Fifty-four to one, we didn't say we'd come back first, no. Uh well, it's a good idea. So the revision was actually larger than what the original was and I think we had some concerns with that. Um the driveway is. Can is capable of handling multiple vehicles already as well as there is a garage. So my feeling is, I'm not inclined to approve a twenty-nine for I think this.
Thirty-two, I think, you know.
Was it thirty-two total?
With his proposal, with his revised proposal, I think.
It's a fourteen. Seventeen foot variance, yeah, thirty-two feet. So does anybody have any other thoughts on that?
I agree.
It's already wider than.
What's allowed.
What's allowed and. Let's make it even wider, so.
Any other thoughts? Okay, so I have for these findings, whether the whether an undesirable change will be produced to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties. Will be created by granting experience, the driveway does seem uh consistent with uh other residents in. Where it is, but in width and size, I think it exceeds because it's already larger and I think exceed uh going beyond that is a little excessive. Whether the benefit um uh sought by the applicant can be achieved by some other method, um the. What is presented was already different than previous and we witnessed they were already parking on the lawn and I think it. It needs to adhere to what it is. Um and and there is also garage access. Um whether the request of the area advance area variance is substantial, mathematically, I think it is for uh amount of the variance to what is already there. Um and whether the proposed variance uh will have an adverse effect or impact to the physical or environmental conditions, there's no evidence of. And whether the alleged uh difficulty was self-created, it was self-created. Um but I do feel that there's adequate parking there currently uh for what the house, the residents can accommodate. Art, I know for those findings. We have the number one, right?
Okay, I moved that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item one. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of site. This is by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as it's set forth by the chair.
Uh all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion isn't denied. Okay, so we had motion to deny its approval.
Yes, actually.
Approved that uh. Um so splash car wash, by the way, feet back, bring them, yeah. True months. Okay, Linda, you're gonna be up for this, so we do have the county denial on this. And we do have a staff report, correct?
Do, okay.
Yeah. Use the staff report for the findings.
Yeah.
Um any discussion on this?
Well, I think, again, we we I think you and I at least agree this is kinda overkill, you know, it's facing the Dunkin' Donuts, it's just gonna gain them all a lot.
Yeah, so my my feeling is that the windows covered.
Those windows are so busy.
Route nine covered in sign and I think even with the applicant presented and then and as uh examples, if you look at all of those. They're in a parking lot of that of that building or on an access road to there or somewhere else. This is in a parking lot for another business and I don't think the photos that they've provided is enough evidence for me to. Say that we wanna go against the county and the staff reports.
Are the window coverings more than twenty-five percent?
I I would think.
I I.
Windows, no, the windows are, yeah, they're well.
So that that in itself is another violation.
And you you can't even get in if where they're proposing the sign, you can't, it's not like the driveways are connected that you can even say, oh, let me go through Dunkin' Donuts.
And if I recall, there's not even parking on that.
No.
It's immediately into the next parking lot, so it's not, you have to park by the bus, there's no traffic other than the Route nine traffic on the opposite side.
You have to be in the, you have to be in the uh center in order to get in there.
Right.
Right, that's the only way in.
Or the Dunkin' Donuts parking up. So I think we're all in agreeance.
Yep.
Okay, so there's a staff report.
Okay. I move that the board deny the request for an area variance set forth in item five. This decision is based on review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing and results of sites. Visits by board members. In denying this variance, the board adopts the findings as set forth by the chair.
Step.
Set forth in by the chair.
So that's step. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion's carried.
Denial. Motion denied, the noise carrying.
Denial is carried. So one fifteen is adjourned, number six.
Mm-hmm.
We still have conversation about it? No, I'm sure, no.
Hmm.
Okay. Eighty-seven, we are the.
Yeah, seventy-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, one hundred and ten, wow.
Okay, so we're down to the last item.
Okay.
This is simple, uh so this is. Uh so the last thing on the agenda is the request for a lead agency. Uh for Maxi. Maxi Storage, eighteen Creek Road.
Yep.
Planning board's looking at this as a under site plan review and special use permit review. Planning board has asked to be lead agency for seeker and uh it may or may not have to come for variance, I don't, we know that yet. But um but if it does, in any case, the planning board could be the lead agent.
Whatever we're gonna do.
Um they're they they, well, there's an existing building there, so they're gonna be utilizing part of that and then there there's a. Some addition, an additional building in the back that they're talking about. So um for which clean motion to.
Yeah. I make the motion that we. So I make the motion to. Or make. Go ahead, Art.
No, go ahead.
No. You're done. Art, can you make the motion that? I make the motion that we uh. Have planned, we've been sent. We're planning board being the lead agent.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And you opposed? And that motion is carried. Um the last thing is Sonya included the trainings. So we take a look at that and then I make motion to. The. That's uh adjourned, April meeting. What is going on with this?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried.
We just look at.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.